I'd like to call to order the Centerville Board of Education meeting for Monday, January 22, 2024. Ms. Sauber, call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Here.
Dr. Graff.
Here.
Dr. Rohr.
Here.
Megan Sparks.
Here.
Mrs. Durnbaugh.
Here. Please rise for the pledge.
... of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, provisioned under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
To move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Graff.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh.
Yes. Next up is honors, and we have a representative from the Centerville Education Foundation.
All right, thank you for having us. My name is Rajeev Boylan.
Seniors who are off to college, and information about those scholarships can be found on our website. Our other big program involves classroom grants, and that's why we're here today. Teachers at all levels submit proposals for special projects in their classrooms that go above and beyond the normal curriculum. CEF evaluates those proposals and then awards grant money to the teachers so that they can purchase supplies that they need in order to turn those ideas into reality. This year, CEF board members selected 20 projects that we felt provided enhanced learning experiences for Centerville students. And in fact, as I look around and see the no less than three posters outlining the mission of Centerville City Schools, it reminds me that this is also in some small way empowering, challenging, and supporting the teachers to be creative and to implement the ideas that they have. Of course, these grants wouldn't be possible without the generous donations from hundreds of parents, alumni, and community members. We thank all of them for their support. Because of our donors, we are able to give over $10,000 in grant money to Centerville teachers today. In particular, I want to acknowledge the Centerville Noon Optimist Organization, who made a sizable donation to this program in specific. We consider the Optimists to be one of our closest partners and are super grateful to them. CEF does accept donations in any amount year-round, so if any of you would like to support our mission, please visit our website at CentervilleEducation.org and click the Donate button. And with that, I'd like to announce this year's classroom grant recipients. I know that some teachers were unable to make it here tonight, but we will make sure to get their checks to them this week. After I'm done, so as I call your project, you can go ahead and come up and get your check from Mr. Carroll and then sit back down. Because we have 20 of these, I'm going to kind of cruise a little bit quickly. I'm not going to necessarily wait for everybody to sit down before I move on to the next one. I mean no disrespect. And after we're done with all 20 of the award announcements, if I could ask all of the teachers to gather, we're just going to walk that way into the back of the Central Commons and take a group photo. All right, so first one. Wings of Wonder from Primary Village North: Marissa Calhoun, Merrill Matthews, and Catherine Satalis. This grant will target all classrooms at PVN and will be used to purchase bird feeders with integrated cameras. Students will be able to use an app to get a close-up observation of the birds that visit the feeder. Congratulations. Wonderful Winter Wonderings, Primary Village North: Molly Dahl, Amanda Kirschbaum, April Fisher, Cassie Bassford, Erin Elsner, Mary Ankenbauer, and Mindy Klein. This grant will benefit all classrooms at PVN and will enable the kids to engage in STEAM activities to explore the season and weather of winter. Some classrooms may wonder how snow or ice forms, and others may study what animals across the world do during winter. Congratulations. Eyes on Nature, Primary Village North: Angie Adams, Ashley Heck, Sarah Jacobs, Kristi Mason, Deanna Numbers, Bonnie Spears, and Anne Watts. This grant will benefit PVN students in the Green Neighborhood. Trail cameras will be purchased and installed throughout their nature area. Students can then check the photos taken by the cameras to learn which animals live around PVN and further study those animals. Congratulations. Multi-Sensory Learning and STEM, Primary Village South: Amanda Miller, Renee Horcher, Janelle Bailey, Emma King, Amy O'Grady, Rebecca Fett, Suzanne Traynor, Anne Ullenhake, Jill Knight. This grant will be used to purchase multi-sensory tools and supplies benefiting all preschool students at PVS. The STEM tool in particular will introduce coding and provide opportunities to build and program the movements of the robot. Congratulations. Print Making with the Sun, Primary Village South: Lindsay Godfrey. With this grant, kindergarten and first grade students at PVS will learn about cyanotype and how the sun's energy can create art prints of the objects they will select on their own. In addition, a whole school cyanotype mural will be created to leave as a more permanent display in the building. Congratulations. Watch Me Look, Touch, and Explore Our Letter Sounds, Primary Village South: Tracy Reebe and Amy Noel. This grant will benefit the first graders at PVS. The objective is to purchase alphabet manipulatives to help students explore, identify, and learn their letter sounds, digraphs, and vowels. Congratulations. STEAM Projects for Tech Time. This benefits all elementary schools by Brenda Silverman. This grant will benefit all second through fifth grade students in the district. Tech Time teachers will use hands-on projects to help students develop their knowledge of the engineering design process. For example, students will build popsicle stick catapults, Lego balloon cars, straw towers, and paper plate roller coasters. Congratulations. Regulation Stations, Klein Elementary: Kelly George, Haley Manfredi, Christina Dunn, Matt Rolling, Kristen Nader, Kelly Wilderth, Tammy Morrow. This grant will benefit fourth graders at Klein who need a safe space to regulate their emotions. Providing students with various sensory items will allow them to do this independently so that they can return to their classroom ready to learn. Congratulations. I Can Be Anything, Klein Elementary: Lori Aronsberger. This grant will target all fifth grade students at Klein and is intended to get elementary students thinking about their interests and how learning connects to the real-life skills necessary for future careers. Funds will be used to purchase career awareness curriculum materials titled "I Can Be Anything I Want to Be" A-Z. Congratulations. Artist Trading Cards, Klein Elementary: Matthew Sazda. This project is sure to get the fourth graders at Klein excited about art class. Students will engage in the process of digital design and the manufacturing process of sport and trading cards. Their designs will be printed, pressed, packaged, and autographed into a small packet of five cards. Klein will then host a special day for students to trade the cards with each other. Congratulations. Pollinator Garden, Klein Elementary, by Andrew Ross. This project is a prime example of authentic learning. Students in Mr. Ross's second-grade class noticed that they were not getting many hummingbirds to their feeders when school began in the fall. After researching the reasons behind this trend, they decided to build a pollinator garden outside their classroom to attract hummingbirds. With the help of this grant money, they will clear the area, fertilize the soil, establish a water source, add an arbor, hang feeders, and plant a fruit tree. Congratulations. I Need a Break Sensory Toolboxes for All, Klein Elementary: Natalie Murray, Katie Thompson. This grant will benefit second-grade students at Klein, giving them an opportunity to take a learning break during the day when needed. These short breaks allow the students opportunities to build self-awareness and regulate emotions in order to do their best learning. Congratulations. Nature Nook, Normandy Elementary: Rebecca O'Neill. This grant will be used to establish a nature nook at Normandy that will benefit all Normandy students. The funds will be used to purchase items for nature play and exploration such as magnifying glasses, binoculars, trowels, field guides, and bins for storing items. Congratulations. Grab and Go Calming Kits, Normandy Elementary: Valerie Dirckel. This project targets Normandy students who need support with self-regulation and coping. The counselor will create approximately a dozen grab-and-go kits containing various tools. The kits are designed to increase self-awareness and self-advocacy and help children learn to recognize their triggers and regulate their emotions. Congratulations. Biomedical Engineering, Normandy Elementary: Leah Goki. First, when I read this title, I was sure it was a high school project, but no, it's an elementary school. With this project, fifth-grade students at Normandy will use the engineering design process and household materials to create a prosthetic for an animal with a missing appendage. Students will first define the problem with the animal, then study real-life examples to gain more knowledge about animal prosthetics. They will design, gather materials, and then construct a prosthetic for their animal. Congratulations. Creating Independence with Task Boxes, Normandy Elementary: Rachel Hatton. This project will benefit second and third graders at Normandy Elementary with specialized learning plans in our Bridge program. Task boxes have been proven to help students learn independence, gain confidence, and transfer that independence over to classroom work. Congratulations. The Braille Experience, Weller Elementary: Missy Fairs. A student in Miss Fairs' classroom has visual impairments and has been conducting their own reading groups using resources from home. As a result, the entire class has taken an interest in learning more about Braille. Funds will be used to purchase a set of Braille brick Legos, allowing students to build words with the bricks and then practice reading them with the Braille dots. Funding will also purchase several biographies on Lewis Braille as well as books written in Braille to add to the classroom library. Congratulations. Weller Nature Playground, Weller Elementary: Matt Moyer. This project will benefit all students at Weller Elementary. A group of fifth graders will help to design a natural outdoor playground, and a team of volunteers will work to implement the design and revitalize the existing space. They will update outdoor learning benches, install birdhouses, and establish walking paths for all visitors to enjoy. The project will also include new signage with links to a website about the history of the area and information about species living in the space. Congratulations. And on to our middle schools. Care Folders, Tower Heights Middle School: Rebecca Such and Kristi Harrison. This project supports any student who needs organizational support at Tower Heights. The Care Folder is a 12-pocket folder that can hold papers for all classes. Students must then transfer work to their class binders to maintain structure and organization. Congratulations. Do-It-Yourself Augmented Reality Sandbox, Watts Middle School: Melissa Lehman, Nicole Mick, Christine Tamilo, Beth Cahill, and Doug McDermott. This grant will benefit all eighth-grade science students at Watts. Using software and an Xbox Kinect sensor, augmented reality overlays digital content onto real-life environments and objects. The Augmented Reality Sandbox allows students to create topography models by shaping real sand, which is then augmented in real time by an elevation color map, topographic contour lines, and simulated water. Then, different types of weathering can be simulated with fans and water to show how the map changes. Congratulations. Congratulations to all the teachers who received grants this year, and thank you for all the great work you're doing in our classrooms. For more details on any of these projects, you can visit our website at CentervilleEducation.org. Thank you. And now...
Mr. Carroll, appreciate your help.
Before we leave, if I could just have everyone stay seated for just a quick minute. I have one quick announcement to make at the podium.
Thank you.
So first of all, I just want to thank Rajeev for being here to hand out the grants. Congratulations to all of you. It's exciting to see your projects and what you plan to use the grant money for, so I wanted to say congratulations. Second of all, I'm here to recognize our Board of Education. January is School Board Appreciation Month, and I would like to take a moment to thank our board for their dedication to the Centerville City School District. First, I'd like to welcome Dr. Amanda Graff Hurst to the board. Dr. Graff is in her first term as an elected official in her first official regular board meeting tonight, so welcome. Earlier this month, Governor Dewine and Lieutenant Governor Houston declared January as School Board Recognition Month. In their proclamation, they stated, "More than 700 boards of education oversee and manage the personnel and properties of school districts throughout the state of Ohio. Board members are elected to establish the policies that provide the framework for schools. Board members devote hours of their time each week to provide leadership to the local schools. School boards feel an important role with members creating and monitoring district plans to make sure students have the tools and skills to reach their full potential. And school boards maintain communication with all segments of their communities to keep public informed of district activities. School board members advocate for the best interests of the students served in their districts. It's important that the community supports school boards so that students receive the best education and are prepared to be the best leaders of tomorrow." So I would like to congratulate and thank our board. The Centerville Board of Education is responsible for over 8,400 students and about 1,100 employees in 14 different buildings across the district. So with that being said, I want to thank you for your work, your dedication. I'd like to thank Megan Sparks, Allison Durnbaugh, Dr. Rohr, John Dahl, and Amanda. We appreciate you, and we appreciate your dedication to the district. So with your help, I'd like to have you congratulate, join me in congratulating the board and the work that they do. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and congratulations to all of the CEF grant winners, recipients. All of the grants tonight were incredibly impressive, as usual, so congratulations on your efforts there. I believe they will be gathering for a picture now. And with that, we can... Okay, with that, we'll just go into our next item, which is Executive Session. If I could have a motion that pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G1, move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of considering the employment of an employee of the school district.
Second.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Graff.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh. Yes, we are in executive session. All right, thank you. We are back from executive session. The next item on the agenda is public participation. However, seeing as we had nobody sign up, we will move on to board and administrative reports. Sorry about that. Starting with legislative report.
The House Primary and Secondary Education Committee heard sponsored testimony on House Bill 348, which would establish pilot programs to increase student attendance and graduation rates throughout the final awards and incentives. This program plans to pay ninth graders and the parents of kindergarten students who have attendance rate of 90% or higher. The goal is to address Ohio's chronic absentee rate, which is a student's missing 10% or more of school hours. At least one rural school district and one urban school district will be chosen to participate. WKYC out of Cleveland explained that if a school is selected, half of their ninth-grade students and the parents of kindergarten students would receive one of three payment options for high attendance. The other half would not. Ohio's Department of Education would then study the attendance rate of both groups to see if the program was working. The payment of those participating in the incentive group are either $25 bi-weekly, $150 at the end of each academic quarter, or $500 at the end of the school year. Students would need to have an attendance rate of 90% or higher for the payment period. The money would come out of the Department of Education and workforce budget. So we're basically going to try to pay people to go to school. The House voted 6528 to override Governor Dewine's veto of House Bill 68. The bill would prohibit gender affirmation care for minors and would designate the act as the Ohio Saving Adolescence from Experimentation Act, SAFE. The bill also included House Bill 6, which would enact the Safe Women's Sports Act to require schools, state institutions of higher education, and private colleges to designate separate single-sex teams in sports for each sex. The Senate is scheduled to consider the override of Governor Dewine's veto on January 24, 2024. And that is the end of the report.
Thank you. Next up are student board representatives.
Hi, everyone. My name's Ashida Mantrey, and I'm a senior on the student board. We're going to be talking about a few different projects that we've been working on over the past few months. So every month, we do something called Candy and Comments, where all of the kids at school are able to fill out a form answering some questions that we want to ask for that month. So for the past two months, we've been focusing on empathy, asking questions like, "How would you describe empathy? How do you want to see it practiced at Centerville and across the district? What's a good that you see from empathy?" And last month, we had some confusion amongst the students. Not many of them knew what exactly it was, how to answer those questions, but we've seen a pretty big change in comparison to this month. A lot more students have responded and given more clear and direct answers, so that's a positive. And then our second project that we have been working on is pet therapy. We have a bunch of different animals come to Centerville High School during AP Week to relieve some stress. It's been enjoyed largely in the past, and we are trying to plan that for this year as well.
Hi, my name's Kate Wallace. I'm also a senior on the board representing the students. As Ashida was discussing about talking to students about empathy and what that means to them, we've also been discussing ways that we can project that message through different mediums around the school with Mr. Carroll for some weeks now. I'm currently working with our Career Tech Program, Mass Communications, to make a segment to go on Friday Focus, which is a weekly video that goes out to the high school about empathy and the importance of showing that to others. I'm also another project that we're working on. I'm working with one of our past representatives, Arushi, who is now at Miami University, on a project for box tops donations at the elementary schools. So we're still trying to coordinate that with different principals, but the hope is to do maybe two elementary schools this year in comparison to the one that we did last year.
Hi, I'm Samaria Williams, and I'm a junior on the school board. With the roundtable, which we work with other school districts around the area, one of our big topics was getting club sports counted as a gym credit. And we're at the point of where we are thinking about talking to some of our representatives, for example, Tom Young, for us to see how we can, I guess, get legislation around this because there's no language within the OHSAA bylaws that allow club sports, and they don't really address it at all. And there is no current ruling or, I guess, language that allows schools to just implement it into their curriculum to count it for a gym credit, so that's what we've been working on.
Hi, I'm Thomas Garcia, and I'm a senior representative. We have also helped commit to helping the levy effort with the Citizens Committee for Centerville Schools and look forward to using our voice to encourage voters to vote this spring for levy. And we are also helping students learn about our local electoral processes as well. That's the end of our report.
Thank you all very much. Next up is Ms. Sauber and the financial report.
Good evening, everybody. Just to start off tonight, just as a reminder of the Auditor of State's guidance, just a quick disclaimer to let you know that the information I'm presenting to you is factual information. District personnel are not allowed to advocate for or against the passage of a levy during times in which we're being compensated. So tonight, I am going to give you an update on state funding. We talked almost a year ago, it was February of 2023, last time that I gave you a little more detail into our state funding. I did give you an update in July when the new budget bill had passed, but I want to get into a few of the numbers tonight on that. Just kind of a recap, now that the property valuation is final and we have our actual value and effective rates and things of that nature, I want to talk about property reval and House Bill 920, and then just a quick reminder of our levy facts. So to start with state funding, House Bill 33 was the biennial budget. That went into effect on July 1 of 2023, and that is in effect for two years, so that's this current school year and then next school year as well. So one of the things that House Bill 33 did was it continued the phase-in of our Fair School Funding Plan that all schools in Ohio are being funded by. The legislature and the budget process, they updated the cost inputs, which helped catch up with inflation. And then they also, they increased the state minimum. There's a floor, and it used to be 5%. They said that no district can receive less than 5% in terms of their state share. They increased that to 10%. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about how that has impacted our numbers. Many districts have seen an increase because of those two factors. There is more money that is going into state funding across Ohio. However, Centerville still remains on the guarantee, and I'm going to show that to you tonight. So first, this might look familiar if you remember this from a year ago. This is our fiscal year '23 funding, and our base state funding is $10,500,000. And again, that is the lowest that we can receive because we're guaranteed to receive the same amount from one year to the next, and so the lowest we would be receiving is $10.5 million. The next column, column B, is our calculated state funding. And again, these are last year's numbers because it's important that I want to show you what happened in July. So taking Centerville last year through the funding formula, if they funded us according to the Fair School Funding Plan, we would receive $3.4 million. That is how, because of the wealth of our district, the high property value, the high income throughout the district, it puts us to where, the way this new formula works, we would be receiving $3.4 million. Column C, though, you can see that phase-in, the phased-in amount was for last year was 33.3%. They would actually have taken that away from us, but because there's a guarantee... They would actually have taken that away from us, but because there's a guarantee, that $10.5 million is the lowest we can get. And so they, they show it as a negative in the, in the funding reports, but they turn around and they give it right back to us in what's called temporary transitional aid guarantee. That is the guarantee that districts who are on the guarantee are on. So that was '23. So I want to compare to you, or I want to show you now how in '24, what's the same and what's different. In this... Mm-hmm. It, it did, yes, yes. It ended June 30th of '23. So July 1 of '23, the new budget goes into effect, and this, this next, this next set of slides is going to show you the difference. So, so in fiscal year '24, and this is our most recent statement, just so you know, this was as of this past Friday. And so you can see that base state funding has not changed. So from '23 to '24, that same $10,500,000 in terms of a base funding is still the same. However, the calculated amount there in column B is now 7.8, almost, so $7,792,000. And so what changed? It's the inputs, so those inputs that they, that they changed to catch up with inflation, and then raising that floor from 5% to 10%. We were at the floor. We were being funded, according to the model, at 5%. And so because that increase, our calculated state funding has now gone from $3.4 million to $7.8 million. But it really doesn't matter because, again, that base amount, that is what we're guaranteed to get, the 10.5. And you can see that then there on the phased-in funding, and then also on that temporary transitional aid guarantee. A side-by-side comparison, and I know in the audience you can't see those numbers, but the boxes show you that when you add the foundation funding together and add that with that temporary transitional aid guarantee, both '23 and '24 equals $10.5 million. So we are on the guarantee. We are solidly on the guarantee, and, and I don't see us moving away from the guarantee. What I did report, though, back in July was that we would receive additional funding for some of the categoricals, the different categories of funding. The main one for us is transportation. And so our transportation funding went from $1.8 million to $2.8 million. The initial simulations said that that was going to be about $700,000. As of this past Friday, it's about $1 million instead of $700,000. And so I'll say again what I said back in July. We're appreciative of every dollar that, that we can get from the state, any additional dollar that we can get from the state. This is a 0.9% increase in our total revenue. So it's, it's less than a percent impact in our total revenue. Any questions about, or comments about state funding? Well, it, it, it's based on the reporting where we turn in our expenses for transportation, and I have those numbers actually. So that increase in transportation is based on our '23 expenses. We submitted $5.6 million for regular education transportation expenses and $2.1 million for special education transportation expenses. So our total transportation cost was well over $7 million, and we've seen an increase in the revenue that we get back for that. It's kind of like a reimbursement, but it's definitely underfunded. Any other questions about state funding? But I had told you in July that I would come back with, you know, kind of a recap. You know, when they put these models in place, it, it takes several months for the changes to catch up in the, in the computer systems and how we're being funded. Finally, in October, that happened. We had a lot going on in November and December, and so I just intentionally have waited a little bit to bring this back to you just as a follow-up. Again, I, I believe the Fair School Funding Plan, there's, there's a lot of good things that have gone in to that for public education across Ohio. It just doesn't help districts like Centerville, so. Okay, so moving on to the, to the property revaluation in House Bill 920. If, if anybody heard any of my presentations throughout the entire fall, I feel like this is all that we talked about, both at board meetings and, and lots of meetings that I sat in on. So what has happened through Montgomery County? We just experienced a triennial update for tax year 2023. It was an adjustment to market, okay? So it takes all the sale data, the, the sales of homes throughout the county. It groups neighborhoods, and it applies an increased value across various neighborhoods throughout the county. So the, this reappraisal will impact the tax bills that have just gone out to the residents throughout the county. So Centerville and everywhere else in Montgomery County is just receiving the tax bills that, that show this reappraisal. Record-breaking is the term that I continue to hear, that I've heard from the county auditor several times. It's been in the paper, news reports. I've, I've heard Mr. Keith speak, several different engagements, and record-breaking are the things that he has said throughout all of those presentations. Overall, for Centerville City Schools, we are increasing 31.3% in total value. Class 1 is agricultural, agricultural and residential properties, so for us, it's almost all residential. That increase is, the average was 33.76% for our district specifically. So a reminder, what is House Bill 920? House Bill 920 is legislation that is put, was put in place back in the 70s to protect taxpayers from large increases to their tax bills when property values go up. And so everything that we've talked about, again, for months, when the property values go up, the effective rate of voted levies reduces. We, as a district, or whichever taxing entity, because this impacts the parks and the libraries and the cities and the townships as well, those effective rates go down so that the taxing entity receives the same amount of revenue from one year to the next. Now, inside millage is separate. That is taxed at the full rate, so that does go up and down with property values. Whatever property value does, the inside millage does, but the majority of the tax is on that voted levy, which is impacted by House Bill 920. Anybody that's interested in looking up what their property value is, or the history of their property value, really, everybody should have received a letter, and so it's probably, the current value is probably at the forefront of their mind. But you can go on to the Montgomery County Auditor's website and do a property search, and I've, I've put the link here for anybody to be able to do that. You can click on the tab that says Value History, and you can take a look and see what has happened to the value of your property, or any property. You can look up any property by address, see what has happened to that property over the years. And so in this example, you can see in 2020, it jumped from 19 to 20, it went from $316,000 up to $341,000, and then that $341,000 stayed the same for three years. We get reappraised every three years. And so that's very typical to see that value stay the same for, for three years at a time. So I expect this new value for this particular property at $448,000, I expect it to be that for next year and the year after. That typically is what will happen. So again, this is just informational so that you can see, anybody can go out and search. This particular property happens to be one of the averages through, like, the exact average, almost, is 31.3%, which was our district-wide increase. My clicker stopped working. There we go. So next, I want to talk a little bit about our effective rate. And so again, remember from House Bill 920, when property values go up, the effective rate reduces, okay? So this is just a very small screenshot from the Levy Distribution tab for the property that we looked at on the last slide with that historical value. And this is from tax year 2022, so before the reappraisal. Before the reappraisal, every resident in Centerville that pays tax to the school district, which is everybody in Centerville and Washington Township, paid an effective rate of 45.88 mils. And that's for all of the levies that the district has. It's inside millage, it's the bond issue that's still out there, the permanent improvement, and then any of the operating levies that we have. It also includes the emergency levy as well. So it's everything that the district has. After the reappraisal, you can see that that, that effective rate reduced because, again, the values went up, right? Everybody's homes increased in value. The effective rate has to come down so that the district receives the same amount of money. Every taxpayer now, on the school district only, this is not, this is not township levies, it's not, you know, fire levies or anything like that, this is only the school district tax. That new effective rate now is 36.16%, or not percent, but mils. So we went from 45 mils down to 36 mils. And so I guess this is just trying to prove, prove all the things that we've been saying for months. House Bill 920 is real, this is, this is what happens. But does it affect every taxpayer the same? Okay? So that's, that's talking about the aggregate across the entire school district. That average sets that effective rate. But your home will potentially go up more than the average, or less than the average, and we use the example of taxpayers A, B, and C. And so I have some numbers here. Yep, and that's actually on my next several slides. Yep. Yep. So again, we, not everybody's property value is doing the same thing. Some people will go up the same as the average, some people go up more, some people go up less. And so just to walk you through, this slide is only inside millage, okay? And remember, on inside millage, whatever your property value is, we pay the full 5.25 mils. That, that is directly proportional with what your value does. That is the growth that the district does see, and we've said that. On inside millage, we do see a little bit of increased revenue. So taxpayer A, their value went up almost 53%. Their inside millage went from $317,000 up to $484,000, for a difference of 167, which means the percentage change there was 52.7%. So that percentage change in tax for inside millage only is identical to what their home value went up. And you can see that for taxpayer B, who is the average district. That's the one in the example that, that Mr. Dahl was just referencing. That's taxpayer B, the same as the average. And then taxpayer C is well below the average. They still had an increase, so their home value still went up, but it went up by 17%, which is well below the average of 31%. So next, let's look at just the voted levies, okay? So this is without the inside millage, and what happens to those same three property values. So taxpayer A, again, this person's value went up 53%. Their voted tax, and again, these are, this is school tax only, went from $2,455,000 up to $2,852,000. That percent increase is a 16% increase on the voted levies. Taxpayer B, however, remember, same, their average is the same as the district's average, $4 difference. So they actually reduce by $4, it's a 0.09%. It's almost exactly the same as what it was in the prior year on the voted levies. And then taxpayer C, a 17% increase, again, still an increase in value, but well below the average, that person's taxes actually went down by $648,000. They had almost an 11% reduction in the tax on the voted levies. And so when you combine that with the inside millage, so this is the total tax then that is paid to, for the school district on their tax bill. Taxpayer A, they saw a 20% increase in their tax bill, on, on the school district portion of their tax bill. Taxpayer B, 3.5%. The, the average, the, the average that the auditor was using countywide was 4% to 6%. That falls right in line with what the auditor had said would happen to the average property homeowner. Taxpayer C, they're going to see a reduction of 7.6%. That, that's an act, that is one of our properties. These are all our properties. And, mm-hmm, yeah. There, there are, I, I don't have the percentages. I have a graphic that I, that now I wish I would have, would have included in this, that I can get to you, or I can bring that next, next month. The majority are between the 20 and 40%, like 25 and 40%. So the majority of residents are closer to the average, but there are outliers. There are, there are community neighborhoods that increased 50, there was even, I saw 60% and a 70% on there in terms of increases. I saw some down as low as 10%. Not very many, but... Yeah? Mm-hmm? Yes, yes. Because again, we will not collect more on those voted levies than what we did in the prior year. And so to do, if someone's is going up higher on the voted levies, that means somebody's had to go down because that's the, that is House Bill 920, and that's the way the, the formula works. Correct, yes. These are the levies that are in place today. Yes. 2019 and prior. Mm-hmm, yes. Yes, yes. Tax, mm-hmm, yes, taxes are always paid in arrears, so the 2023 taxes are going to be paid in 2024. So just in summary, on that again, I, I feel like we can't say it enough because it is confusing to, to, to many people to understand, when the property values go up, the effective rates come down, and we, as a district, will receive the same amount of revenue. And not all taxpayers are going to see the same impact. Not everybody is going to see the same thing. And so I, I wish there was a blanket statement that we could just put out there that says, this is what's going to happen, but it's, it's really very specific by property. And so all I can do is encourage people that if you have questions about your bill, call the auditor. That, that's their role, that's what they're there for, and they welcome those calls, they encourage those calls. And so if, if a person has a specific question and doesn't understand something, you know, about their tax bill, the auditor's office is there to help and to answer those questions. Mm-hmm, yeah, yes. So their increase, though, is, is mostly from the inside millage. That, that is the change. Their inside millage went up 196, and the, the tax on the voted portion went down actually $4, and so that nets out to $192. Yep. So then finally, just a quick reminder about the levy facts. We are on the ballot on March 19th, 2024. There is no issue number yet. As soon as that information has been released by the Board of Elections, I will be sure to communicate that out to everyone. It's a 3.9-mil operating levy for operating expenses that will generate $11.2 million per year. This levy costs about $11.38 per $100,000 of home value as appraised by the county auditor, and that's on the new value. That's the, the change in the new value. That was definitely a confusing factor in the November election because we had to use the 2022 values to talk, to talk about things in terms of trying to estimate what that cost would be, but everybody's value was changing, and so hopefully that will be a little clearer this time around. It's $11.38 per $100,000 of, of value.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Wesney.
Good evening. So tonight, I just want to share with the board some of the things that we've been talking about as far as a reduction plan and looking at that reduction plan over a couple phases throughout this spring and as we get closer to the March election. So very similar to what Ms. Alver just talked about, this information being provided tonight is merely factual. Gives us the opportunity, as district personnel are not allowed to advocate for or against the passage of the levy or bond issue during times that they are being compensated by the district. So again, disclaimer that we've used in a lot of our presentations to talk about our factual information. So tonight, I'll be sharing some background information regarding our team's guiding principles as we looked at reductions and proposed reduction plan moving forward. So in this timeline, goes back to November seventh of two thousand and twenty-three, the Centerville, Washington Township community rejected a levy request for five point nine mils that would have raised twelve point nine million per year to fund operations and permanent improvements. The only way to eliminate the projected deficit is to pass the levy or make significant reductions or a combination of both of those options. In December, the Board of Education passed a resolution to place a three point nine mil levy on the ballot for March nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. This levy is an operating expenses only. If it's passed, will raise eleven point two million dollars annually, as Mrs. Alver just reported. The Board and district administrators listened to community and staff multiple meetings throughout the month of December to get feedback and insight into the district finances. This reduced levy request, along with gaining some budgetary efficiencies through reductions, should allow the district to stabilize its budget for the next four to five years. Tonight, we'll take a look at, we'll be asking the Board to approve the phased reduction plan as it stands right now. And I think it's important to share that, that this is kind of a snapshot of our plan as where we are right now, and we need to have some flexibility as we move forward because we are continuing to get retirements and resignations during this time of the year. Once approved by the Board, the reduction plan can be used to provide neutral factual information to the public about district finances. For our guiding principles, as we looked at potential reductions, our team tried to keep in mind some of these principles. I already mentioned that we are trying to incorporate some of the community feedback that we received back in December. We want to minimize the impact of the classroom, protect the core classroom the best we can, but we'll need to realize that any cuts that we make will be a reduction in services. For example, a reduction of services may be increasing class size from twenty-five to twenty-six to twenty-seven kids to that classroom, depending on that class. We try to think outside the box, looking at not just positions, but other ways to save money, whether it's through contracts, increasing fees, et cetera. Finally, you'll see that the total amount saved is more than what was shared during our board meetings and community forums. If we can realize some additional savings, we'll be in a better position to move forward with our strategic plan initiatives moving forward. In this slide, you can see the phased reduction plan. It shows the number of positions that would be reduced in each phase. You can also see the anticipated savings to the district's general fund, which includes some of other cost savings that are in addition to personnel reductions. The two slides, the next two slides will show those phases in more detail. So if you look closely at phase one, phase one will happen no matter the outcome of the levy in March. We're looking at four positions, certificated staff, about ten and a half reduced classified positions for a total of fourteen point five positions. Again, we're estimating about one point two seven million dollars in reductions. That's not just in salaries. There's some other savings that you'll see on the next few pages. Phase two would take place if the levy fails in March. It would be a combination of phase one and phase two. So you can see over those two phases, it would be a total of almost, it's over forty-one positions and almost two point eight nine million dollars in reductions. Because of the reduced levy requests, we need to gain some budgetary efficiencies through reductions or attrition. We've come up with a phased plan for these reductions. We will implement phase one for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year regardless, again, of the levy outcome. We anticipate the savings to be about one point two seven million from the district's general fund through the following reductions. Reduce four certificated positions, one math teacher at Centerville High School, one science teacher at Centerville High School, one special education teacher at Centerville High School, one middle school physical education teacher. Reduce ten point five classified positions, that's five paraprofessionals, special education teacher aides, two custodians, a bus driver, and two point five clerical positions. In addition to that, we're also looking at eliminating eleven academic building coordinators, supplemental stipends or contracts, and savings from hiring new staff at the lowest starting salary to replace retiring certificated staff. So you can see this phase, which would be the first phase that we're looking at, we've already implemented some of these reductions. This is something we do very similar every year. When we look at retirements and resignations, we take the opportunity to see where we can reduce those positions if need be. Phase two for this plan, sorry, I went the wrong way. Phase two. And this reduction plan would be implemented in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year only if the March campaign levy is not passed. These reductions are anticipated to save an additional one point six two million from the district's general fund. Again, that's in addition to the one point two seven that would be saved through the phase one process. If implemented, this phase would reduce another ten point seven five certificated positions. That includes one English arts teacher at Centerville High School, one math teacher from CHS, one career education position at Centerville High School, two middle school physical education teachers, four elementary general education teachers, one elementary special education teacher, a point seven five counselor. We have a counselor in one of our buildings that does part-time counseling for point seven five every day and also serves in a clerical position. We also took a look at some of our classified staff. In addition to that, would be sixteen classified positions, five paraprofessionals, as I mentioned before, special education teacher aides, eleven clerical positions. We're also looking at increasing school fees for pre-K students for an additional fifty dollars. Increase fees for students in grades one through five, which would be an additional seventy-five dollars in that increase. Increase pay to participate fees by twenty percent, increase building use fees by ten percent, increase athletic field rental fees by twenty percent, and evaluate supplemental contracts for additional reductions. We have several supplemental contracts throughout the district. We just need some more time to look through those contracts and look at other ways to maybe save money if the levy fails in March. So again, just to reiterate the two phases, it would be a combination, as I mentioned, of almost forty-one positions if need be, if the levy goes down in March, for about two point eight nine million dollars. And again, I'm asking the Board for approval tonight to approve this reduction plan, but to also give us some leniency and some flexibility as we know that we're going to get some additional retirements. We received a retirement today at mid-morning that is not reflected in this plan, and it will make a significant change, especially in our phase one process in our plan. So I wanted to present that. I also want to share that we have some community forums that are already scheduled for sharing information about the three additional community forums. We plan to discuss school finances and the levy that'll be on the March ballot. You can see the dates. The meetings will be similar to the formats that were held the ones like we did in December, where Laura and I will share a brief presentation and offer the community opportunity to share or present questions or give us feedback about our district finances. The dates of those forums, all the meetings will start at six thirty. The first one will be Wednesday, January the thirty-first, at Magzik Middle School, Thursday, February twenty-second, at Watts, and then again on Wednesday, March the thirteenth, at Tower Heights Middle School Cafeteria. So with that being said, any questions from the Board? And I can't emphasize enough that the reductions you see here will impact the quality and services that we're providing on a daily basis in all of our buildings, all the way down to the classroom, the support that's there in the classroom as well. So it's been a challenge to come up with this list, but again, I think it's important to understand how this will impact the services that we've been providing for our students. I'm going to take one last item since I'm here. We continue to receive several questions about the new athletic complex. The new athletic complex is part of an athletic campaign that was started last April, will not be moving forward. So I just wanted to make that as a public announcement. We've put that out on our website. We've talked about that in our work session earlier this month. The construction of the facility would have been funded by private donations with no construction costs to the taxpayer with future operating costs offset by facility rental fees. The campaign, we had a deadline in December to raise those funds. We did not reach the financial goal, and so that project, this project will not be moving forward. I know Mr. Dement, our athletic director, is working on contacting the donors who have already contributed and getting money back if need be for those contributions, but just wanted to share that again publicly with everyone here tonight.
Thank you. All right, moving forward to the treasurer recommendations. May have a motion to consider approving the December two thousand and twenty-three financial statements including the monthly general fund rolling report, monthly cash reconciliation, monthly fund activity report, then and now purchase orders approved by administration, certified by the treasurer, and supported by board resolution totaling fifty thousand five hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-five cents.
So move.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Yes. Consider approving the minutes of the following Board of Education meetings. December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three work session, December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting, January fourth organizational meeting, and January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four work session.
Remove.
Second.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Yes. Superintendent recommendations. The superintendent recommends accepting resignations as listed on Schedule A. The superintendent recommends the employment, change of employment status or change of contract status for the certificated personnel listed on Schedule B for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. Superintendent recommends the employment or change of employment status for the support staff personnel listed on Schedule C for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. Superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on Schedules D and D one for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments. And superintendent recommends the granting of leaves of absence for the personnel listed on Schedule E for the reason and on the dates given.
So move.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Yes. Consider the approval of the phased reduction plan as of Monday, January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year as presented.
Remove.
Is there any additional discussion? Okay, seeing none, call the roll, please. Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Reluctantly, yes.
Megan Sparks?
Reluctantly, yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Yes. Consider approving the following firms to provide legal services to Centerville City Schools for the calendar year of two thousand and twenty-four, and those are as listed in the agenda.
So move.
All right.
Mr. Wesney, I believe we discussed at the work session that even though we are approving all of these, that doesn't necessarily mean that we are paying any retainer fees. These simply allow us to go to these firms for guidance.
That is correct. Some of it's for like workers' compensation that we work with, like Hunter Consulting. So it's not necessarily a legal firm, but it does help us, the third-party consultant that we use.
Let me look at the fees that they charge us and try to watch that closely, right?
We do.
They all charge too much, just so you know. They charge too much.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Yes. Consider approving a resolution declaring certain items of personal property obsolete and unneeded and authorizing the superintendent or his designated to sell the personal property.
So move.
Second.
This is an annual?
This is an annual. Gives us an opportunity to sell some of our equipment back, like on gov deals. We sell a lot of our buses, once they're used and have a lot of miles on them and are rusting. And so that just gives us an opportunity to get rid of some of our old equipment.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Yes. Any final comments regarding past or old business from the Board? Seeing none, is there a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Second.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Yes. Thank you all very much.